Thank you, Mrs. Howard. A couple announcements. Tonight, we have the Relay for Life Kids out there selling treats. So help yourself to that for a good cause. You'll notice when you came in, there was a big sign blocking and there's... Well, we used to have something up here about the survey. No? Uh-oh, Adam didn't put it up. There's a survey in the back near the clickers. I'm asking you all to kind of either go online and take it or use the paper versions. And I got something to read. "To help us reach our goal of reducing paper at next year's town meeting and improve our town meeting overall, please take a few minutes to complete this town meeting member survey online available at the town meeting webpage. Your feedback will guide our efforts to make improvements for next year's meeting." Paper versions are available in the back. That will have to be hand-entered by the staff. If you can please do those paper versions. If you have to, pass them over to the outside edges and just leave them on the floor. Adam Kay will pick them up and get those tabulated. If you have any questions about that, either see me or see Adam, who's back there handing things out. It'll only take about a minute to do this survey and it'll kind of help us along the way. All right, are there any town meeting members who have not yet been sworn in? Either new members or repeat elected members? Looks like every... Maureen, you've been sworn in. All right, I recognize I'm the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth and the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, May 8th, 2019 at 8:00 PM.
All in favor? Opposed? So moved. Any announcements? Mr. Hayner, then Mr. Revellak, then ma'am.
Bill Hayner, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, I'm proud to announce that the Rotary Club of Arlington will be honoring two town officials at its annual Paul Harris Dinner on June 4th at the Woburn Country Club. Clarissa Rolle will be made a Paul Harris Fellow and Alan Tosti will be recognized as the Arlington Rotary Club's Citizen of the Year. Tickets for the event are available on... Tickets for the event will be available online by going to Rotary Club of Arlington and clicking on the Paul Harris Dinner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Revellak?
Steve Revellak, 111 Sunnyside Avenue, Precinct 1. Last week, Phil Goff made an announcement about a cleanup effort that was happening at the Elway Greenway. We had a really good event, so I would like to show a couple of pictures of what we did. So, next slide. So, these are the folks from the East Arlington Livable Streets Coalition. They're gathered out by the dog park near Elway Tea Station. Don't they look happy? Next slide. And here they are picking up trash along the greenway, and they still look happy. Next slide. So, here is sort of the highlight of the day behind Sunnyside Avenue, which involved hauling a couple of pieces of chain-linked fence basically out of the mud. And next slide. We didn't take a picture of our crew, but we did take a group picture of what we picked up, and this is what we ended up with. Again, I'd like to thank everyone. I'd like to thank everyone who takes the time to organize and participate in events like this, because I really think they make the town better and people who use the greenway and the bike path, et cetera, et cetera, really appreciate it. I would also like to recognize Charlotte Milan for helping to coordinate trash pickup from the town side. And Charlotte, if you're here, sorry about all the chain-linked fence. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jane Howard, Precinct 10. I'd like to invite you all to the 15th Annual Spy Pond Trails Day Cleanup and Planting on May 11th from 9:00 to 1:00. And we're going to be joining the Appalachian Mountain Club, as we do each year, for this. And we clean up the shoreline. We've made tents trails to the pond out of granite from discarded materials at the building of the Sims Hospital and also a bench that now nestles in the hill and you can look straight down Spy Pond. We'll continue taking care of those things. If you come, you can help control invasive plants and you can clear the vistas to the pond, pick up trash, help plant new Waters Edge plants. Down close to the pond, we're actually putting in some dogwoods, very low-growing dogwoods, which will be quite pretty and will also help stabilize the bank. This is a community service project, so for the kids at the high school. They often, if they're free, can come and do this. They have to have parents' permission if they are under 18. Those 18 and over do not have to have that. Or any child who comes should be supervised by an adult. Snacks will be provided. And just bring your lunch if you want to and work on that bank. And we'll all eat lunch together down there and recognize the work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Any other announcements?
Sarah Burks, Precinct 17, 993 Massachusetts Avenue. I would just like to call attention, as the co-chair of the Cyrus Dallin Art Museum Board of Trustees, I'd like to call attention to our report in the town's annual report, starting on page 73. And to thank anyone who is currently a town meeting member for your vote. Back over 20 years ago, we celebrated our 20th anniversary this year. We had a number of really important lectures, including a sold-out lecture at the MFA to talk about Dallin's appeal to the Great Spirit and current interpretations of that. We hosted a tour and sculpture workshop for 14 youth from North Dakota, from the Pine Ridge Reservation, which has currently been undergoing some flooding damage. But they came out last summer to visit the museum and to see other sites in Massachusetts. And we look forward to continued collaboration with other town groups and hopefully with the town itself on a future restoration of the interior of the Jefferson Cutter House. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other reports of announcements? Okay, seeing none, let's do our clicker test. Let's get your handheld voting device out. The question today, Vincent Van Gogh sold only one painting during his lifetime. True or false? Vincent Van Gogh sold only one painting during his lifetime. True or false? One for true, two for false. The eyes have it. True. The Red Vineyard sold in 1890, a few months before his death. Make sure you got your right clicker vote. All right, have any reports of committees? Any committees have a report? Priya?
Priya...
Go ahead, not you, them.
Priya Sankalia, Precinct 13, 253 Pheasant Ave. I move that town meeting accept the report of the Recycling Committee, but now Zero Waste Arlington.
All in favor of receiving the report of the Recycling Committee, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It is so received.
Thank you, town meeting members, for supporting Article 28 regarding our name and mission. We will now be Zero Waste Arlington with increased membership and a wider-ranging mission. We are striving to enable Arlingtonians to think more critically about their households' solid waste creation and disposal practices and the impacts of their personal consumption habits. Listening to all of the cleanup efforts, I'm hoping that we can reduce that, because there'll be lesser waste out there. The report has more details, but I'd like to give you some highlights of what they've been doing all year. A key part of our mission has been outreach and education. Our committee had volunteers, and volunteers have tabled several events all over town with the aim of connecting with the community. People have questions, and we've been trying to give them the answers. We have many ideas for living up to our new name. We're discussing zero-waste initiatives with this summer's Beer Garden vendor and contemplating how to reduce the waste at Town Day. Thank you also for passing Article 29 and restricting the use of polystyrene starting next year. Our goal for next year will be to build on this by educating restaurant owners and consumers. Businesses can rethink their use of plastic and offer alternatives, and customers can refuse single-use items such as straws and utensils and can bring their own containers for packaging leftovers when dining out. We've continued our work on the textile campaign from last year. You might have seen posters all over town and in our schools with the tagline, "Worn, torn, donated, all." Working in collaboration with our school's sustainability and recycling coordinators, the Bay State textile bins have thus far, in 2019, received 46,000 pounds of textiles per bin, which translates to $2,300 for our schools. I'm sorry, that's 46,000 pounds of textiles across all the bins. JRM hauls 12,800 tons of waste a year destined for the incinerator and 5,000 tons of recyclables. Our monthly recycling center continues to be popular, bringing in hard-to-recycle heavier items such as large, bulky, rigid plastics, electronics, and scrap metal. We at Zero Waste Arlington are hoping we can do better than that, all of us are hoping that we can do better than that, and have many suggestions and ideas. Please seek us out at the town website, on our Facebook page, at our tabling events, or sign up for our emails. We live in challenging times in a rapidly changing world. The news about climate change and global warming can at times get overwhelming and confusing. It's, however, becoming clearer that our actions are having profound effects on our planet. We at Zero Waste Arlington hope to simplify this to some extent by focusing on the individual. Let's consider how the solid waste we generate has an impact on our environment and what we can do to change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports of committees? Mr. Carden?
Len Carden, Precinct 20, and Chair of the School Committee. I move acceptance of the School Committee report to Town Meeting.
All in favor of accepting the School Committee report, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? So accepted.
Thank you. We're going to hold our presentation to the budget discussion, which hopefully will be later tonight, so I'll see you later. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other reports of committees? Seeing none. Mr. Tosti? So it's important when you speak to speak right into the microphone, because they're unidirectional, so you've got to...
Fellow town meeting members, the order of, as has been discussed before, or let you know before, is we're going to do Minuteman first. We're going to go directly into the budgets, and then if we finish the budgets, we'll go into the capital budget and CPA. And so those will be our jobs tonight. Therefore, I move to table Articles 35 through 62.
All in favor of tabling Articles 35 through 62, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? They're so tabled. You should table three as well.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Minuteman. This is an exciting time for Minuteman. As many of you know, the new school will be opening this fall. I'd like to introduce or point out, over to the left, Sue Scheffler, who is the Minuteman representative on the school committee, the Arlington representative on the Minuteman School Committee. And I'd like to introduce Ed Boquillan, who requests a total of 15 minutes for his presentation.
Table Article Three?
I did that first, I think. Okay, I lay Article Three on the table.
All in favor of laying Three on the table, please say yes.
Yes!
All in favor of giving Dr. Boquillan 15 minutes, please say yes.
Yes!
Any knows?
Okay.
None. Dr. Boquillan?
Thank you, Mr. Tosti. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Town Meeting. Next slide. Oh, I can control it here, right? Okay, cool. This is where I have to kind of turn to make sure I know where I am. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief summary of our purpose, our budget, our building, enrollment, and then there'll be time for questions, I hope. What we are driven to do at Minuteman, I would say, many of you who know Minuteman know that our students are unique, and when they leave Minuteman, they leave Minuteman with a purpose, because they've had the opportunity to understand what it is they love to do and do well. The two most important questions schools can help children answer, and then many times adults need to answer these questions, too. Once they have been answered, it unlocks motivation, it releases performance, and it gives them a sense of who they are and where they're going. I have to point this at you? Down, gotcha, thanks. I didn't have enough training tonight, and I'm from a vocational school. Going right to the budget, our total budget is $19,600,000. When you exclude the debt portion related to the school building project, our budget is up about 3.4% over this fiscal year. The building project debt in FY '20 will total about $3.1 million. Overall, when you add in all the costs associated with it, our budget is up about 7.6%, but our assessments to member towns is up almost 15% in large part due to the construction project, but to some other factors that I'll cover in a moment. The Arlington assessment this year is $5.39 million, a total assessment increase of about $447,000. Of that increase, $305,000 is due to the capital payments on the new facility. The Minuteman Building Project... Here we go. It's a little video. [coughs] So, that's what we're looking like. Thank you. Every time I go over there, I just can't believe I'm there. Some of you may know it took quite a while to get it approved. I think 12 years. And I'll just mention now, before I forget it, we're having our official ribbon cutting on October 4th. It's a Friday morning around 10:00 AM. Prior to that, we'll be having some other events that we'll make sure you're aware of, because it is an impressive place. And the fact that we're a year ahead of our original schedule and on budget is a real testament to our construction team, our school building committee. Skanska, who you have, I believe, in your project, is our owner's project manager, and Gil Bain. They came in with an aggressive schedule, and despite a number of challenges, including weather and not having enough trained workers, we are getting it done. So these are some milestones coming up. We've begun the move management process. We do have some proposed athletic fields that go beyond the original scope of the MSBA project, which we submitted to MSBA as an alternate. Last July, the governor signed a bill, House Bill 4503, which allows Minuteman to enter into long-term ground leases with partners who are mission-compatible and campus-centric. So we've hired the Massachusetts Donahue Institute to help procure or manage a process that would identify public partners and establish public-private partnerships that would expand the availability and the fields so that more folks in our district and region can utilize fields. I have nothing really solid to report about it. We're opening proposals, hopefully in a few weeks, but we intend to have those athletic fields would be open in the fall of 2020. Enrollment. This year's enrollment, as you can see here, is about 516 students. We've had a struggle with enrollment over the years, and one of the big, important questions about Minuteman going forward was, what was the size of the school that would be most appropriate? The design enrollment of the school that was approved by all of our member towns, all 16-member towns at the time, in the school building authority, was 628. You can see our enrollment over the last few years has been fairly steady, with member district enrollment about 350, up or down a bit. The green descending line is the number of students who come from outside of the member district towns, which we now have 10-member district towns. And the little bar on the yellow is the number of students that we get from the six towns that chose not to be a member when the regional agreement was voted on in 2016, I believe. However, what's going on now, and we still have four months left in a... Maybe we don't have four months left. I should just say that last year, all the way up until September 1st, the opening of school, we had 147 students apply to Minuteman from just the 10-member towns. This year, as of May 1st, we've had 205 students apply, almost a 40% increase in the number of students from just our 10-member towns. And if you take 628 and divide it by four, that's 157. So we may, in fact, be having a waiting list to get into Minuteman for this coming fall. Based upon our applications, in this past weekend, we had our placement testing, where all the incoming freshmen come to Minuteman, and we've found over the last five years that 98% of the students who come to that day and test are actually there on October 1. This past Saturday, we had 185 students attend, and about 25 said they weren't able to, and so we've rescheduled them. So we're anticipating an enrollment of about 610 this fall. We've also had a large number of increases of applications for students entering the sophomore year and one or two from the junior year, which we can accept on a limited basis. So, and we look at our enrollment in Arlington, we're projecting it to be around 150 come this fall. So historically, enrollment over the last few years has averaged about 119. That's the basis of the assessment. I will remind you that in the new regional agreement, we use a four-year rolling average when it comes to determining assessments now, so that next year in particular, there won't be a spike in assessments. I don't know what the assessment will be next year, but it's going to be mitigated by the four-year rolling average. So overall, our budget again is up a total of $1.6 million. Our assessments to the towns, up about 15%. This is our budget history over the last few years. Obviously, the debt service is starting to hit the budget, which is accounting for the majority of our increase. Some major considerations in this FY '20 budget, about $600,000 is due to the collective bargaining agreement for increases in steps and lanes for teachers. We're in the end of a three-year contract, which was 1%, 2%, and 3% colas. We have had some staffing changes in terms of retirements and some reorganizations. Over the last few years, we've been funding our stabilization account, because we understood that the MSBA formula for furnitures, fixtures, and equipment was completely inadequate for a vocational technical high school. So, thanks to the approval of Town Meeting across all of our districts, we've been able to build a balance in our stabilization account of about $766,000, which will be used to buy furniture, fixtures, and equipment, which the project will not support. I will mention, we've also been very successful in getting over $1.4 million worth of equipment grants over the last two years. So we're in very good shape for the new building. Some other considerations in our budget, health insurance is up about $140,000. We've had additional contribution to the Minuteman retirement budget. We're continuing to fund OPEC at a very modest amount of $50,000 a year. Utilities, we expect to decrease, even though we'll be operating two buildings for a while. The efficiencies in the new building are quite significant. We are collecting that capital fee in this budget, but we are not using it to reduce assessments until FY '21. That capital fee will be in addition to a non-resident tuition of between $4,600 and $6,200, I should say, either/or, depending on the community that the student comes from. This is just another look at our revenue plan. You'll see a reduction in prior-year tuition. That's based upon the changes in the regulations that are prohibiting students from out-of-district communities to attend with the freedom and the accessibility that they once had. Just a look at our capital and debt service, that's part of the operating budget, as well as the project budget. And then just another look at our overall budget by fund code, by state fund code. So, just in closing, the assessment to Arlington is 5.384 million. And I thank you for your attention and your support of Minuteman and our students and your students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Volkow. Anyone wish to address the article? Ma'am?
Deanne Dupont, Precinct 13. And I'm in favor of this, I want to mention that first, but I have one question, and I lost it on my tablet, but it had to do with custodians and the contract. It looked like perhaps you're reducing staff, but replacing them with contracts, and the contracts are higher than what you're replacing as staff. So, could you explain that further?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I, we had several retirements from the custodial staff, which we had anticipated. We haven't gone out to bid for cleaning services yet, but the cost that we, it's going to be about the same. It's not going to save us much money, but we wanted to spend our own resources on finding those people that would work during the day, that have some more experience in a facility of this level. So, the cleaning facilities that we, the cleaning services, we have not yet gone out to bid yet.
So, is there like a placeholder in there? Because the reduction in salaries is much less than the contract services.
Well, we have three staff. The reduction in salaries and benefits and contributions to the retirement are about $230,000 total, which I don't think was completely reflected in this presentation. And what we've estimated, the cleaning services would be about $220,000, $225,000.
And then the other $55,000, if I remember the amount, for the contractual, I think it was 275?
I don't, I recall it as sort of an even swap.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dupont. Anyone else wish to address the article? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a vote. Thank you, Dr. Volkow.
Thank you.
All in favor of the recommended vote of the Finance Committee?
[inaudible]
Oh, didn't see you there. We're not ready for a vote yet.
Rodder Collin, Precinct 7. Rise in support of the article, and just wanted to add a little story. My youngest son attended the Minuteman in a pre-engineering program. He found it himself. He presented it to us. We said, "Okay." He went, he was remarkably engaged. I was impressed by the whole thing, and it prepared him well to move on, and he's since been through a four-year program and is now out in industry and doing good work.
Great, thank you.
So, this is a wonderful resource.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, now we're ready for a vote. All in favor of the recommended vote of the Finance Committee for Minuteman, $5,384,690. Soon as we're ready, press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Go ahead and vote, 1 for yes, 2 for no. It's a unanimous vote, 209 to positive, 0 to negative. Thank you, Dr. Volkow, good job. Closes Article 63. Ms. Tosti?
I move that Articles 57 and 58 be taken from the table. That will bring the budgets and the capital back up.
All in favor of taking 57 and 58 off the table, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? They are off the table. Article 57 is now before us. Yes, sir?
I have a comment about the project.
Okay.
You heard me speak once before about the value of our property in town, and the fact that it's appreciating enormously, because everyone really desires to come to Arlington. Well, that's just, that's essentially a reputation, if you like, or a perception on the part of people, that this is a great place to live. So, one of the things that would be really bad for us to do is to poke any kind of a hole, or in any way tarnish that perception. I think when we proceed now with two budgets, okay? One budget based on the assumption there's going to be an override, and another budget that's going to be based on the assumption of no override, is convenient for us, but sends the wrong message, I mean, the really wrong message, to the people of Arlington. You heard me talk about how our properties are appreciating in value. That's much more important than us maybe having to come back here again, because it's convenient if we vote here for the possibility that there might not be an override. So, I would hope that we could simply eliminate that second budget in here, and simply vote the budgets that's based on the override, and live with the fact that we may have to come back if there is no successful override. I would point out to you, and I spoke to Sandy Poler a little while ago, that if there is no override this year, then it's going to look like we're going to have to do one twice as large a year from now. And I also don't buy the assumption that a lot of people put forward about the people on fixed income who can't afford their taxes. There is a tax abatement program that will help them, and it will cost you 3.5%, cost them 3.5%. It's much less than their property increases each year. So, I would hope that we would not be, not vote the second budget, which is the, in case of the possibility of no override. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. That was your under 57, correct? That's what you were speaking to, Mr. Dice? Yes?
I move that we simply vote on the budget. It's a conservative.
Okay. All right, so. Second, Mr. Dice has a, Mr. Tosti, did you have, did you want to present first? Mr. Dice kind of jumped in. Can you put that in writing, Mr. Dice?
I think that the way the Finance Committee is recommending this to you is clear, concise. It meets the requirements of the law for contingent votes, will allow us to proceed through the process, and we are ready, whether the override passes or not. To have to call 252 people back after June 11th to redo the budgets simply does not make much sense to us. It seems like a waste of time. The override can pass or might not pass. Because we're passing contingent votes, just like towns across the state do all the time, does not imply one way or the other, I think, on the town. It's simply a mechanical way of doing it in an efficient way. And I think we've laid it out fairly clearly. We're only talking three budgets, that this impacts within the budgets. And I'd recommend that we proceed as we have it, and vote down on Mr. Dice, who I have a great deal of respect for, motion to proceed only in one way.
Mr. Carden, did you want to present the school budget? Or the school report?
Now.
Now. I don't even have his vote in writing. Well, we're going to have him present his report, then we'll go through and hold all of them. You're up, Len.
All right, thank you. Good evening, I'm Len Carden, Precinct 20, and Chair of the Arlington School Committee. Actually, if I could ask for 10 minutes, I think we only have eight, but let me ask for 10, just in case.
All in favor of giving the School Committee 10 minutes? Please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? You have 10 minutes, sir.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Town Meeting for the, its support of the Arlington High School project, and the Building Committee members for all of their hard work in getting us to this point. We've had an exciting year so far in the Arlington Public Schools. In addition to developing the high school plan, we opened the Gibbs School, a fantastic updated facility with innovations such as project-based learning, responsive classroom, and a softer transition from elementary to secondary school level. Opening the Gibbs has created space at Odison for our growing population of 7th and 8th graders, and we've also opened the six classrooms at Hardy to accommodate our brisk East Arlington enrollment growth. All of these new spaces would not have been possible without the help of the Town Manager, Capital Planning and Finance Committees, the AHS and Permanent Town Building Committees, and Town Meeting, and I'd like to extend thanks to all of them. This year, the School Committee and School Administration has worked together on a five-year budget plan. We wanted to get a longer-range picture of the true needs of the school system. Included in the plan, which is available on our website, are five areas of focus. We must, of course, continue to direct significant resources to address enrollment growth, with 600 additional students expected over the next five years. Beyond classroom teachers, we need to add school counselors, nurses, reading teachers, et cetera. We also need to devote some resources towards closing the achievement gap, which is the performance gap between our high-need students and the general population. This will include improving interventions for struggling students and enhancing special education delivery models. We also need to make targeted investments to improve instruction for our students, such as adding librarians with digital learning expertise and replacing outdated curriculum materials. We need to ensure safe and supportive schools by continuing to enhance social-emotional learning and adding social workers. Finally, we need to attract and develop talented staff by enhancing professional development and making compensation more competitive. We are pleased that this year's budget and the override plan include two key changes that will assist us with these efforts. First, the funding formula for enrollment growth was changed, so that the schools get about 7,200 per additional student, instead of 5,000 per additional student. Additionally, as we've just discussed in the Finance Committee report, an additional $600,000 will be allocated to help implement the plan, if the override is successful, on June 11th. These changes will still leave Arlington spending significantly less than either the town, than either the average of the Town Manager 12 communities or the state, but it should keep us from falling further behind. We appreciate the effort of our legislative delegation in advocating for increased funding for our town, and are pleased to note that Arlington will receive an increase of over $2 million in FY '20 and state education aid that will help pay for some of these needed increases. We greatly appreciate the support we've received from the town. And now, Dr. Bodie will present a few slides capturing the highlights of our budget.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members, good evening. I also want to thank you for your overwhelming support for the high school project. Assuming town-wide approval in June, we will begin construction next summer. In other highlights this year, the Arlington Public Schools remains a high-performing school district, though, as mentioned, we still have some persistent achievement gaps for some of our students, which are addressed in the proposed budget, as well as the five-year plan. As Mr. Carden mentioned, we have had a successful opening of the Gibbs School this year, and opened six classrooms addition at the Hardy School in December. In September, the Arlington Public Schools was awarded the U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon School District Recognition for reducing greenhouse gases, addressing nutrition, fitness, mindfulness, and the overall health of students and staff, as well as teaching curriculum at all levels that addresses environmental topics. This morning, our Sustainability Coordinator, Rachel Oliveri, and our district-wide green teams were honored for this work at the State House. So, congratulate them all, and say how very proud we are. As a district, we have also focused on cultural competency and social-emotional learning. We believe by enhancing these competencies, it will strengthen our ability to connect across race, class, culture, language, gender identity, sexual orientation, learning differences, and age, and have safe and supportive learning communities in all of our schools. Acting on that commitment, and with the support of AEF, we have trained over 300 staff members in youth mental health first aid this year. Enrollment continued to grow this year. In the last three years, the district has grown by about 700 students. In the last six years, over 1,000. In the next five years, an additional 600 students are expected to enroll. This chart demonstrates the pattern. Both the district's projections, the bar graphs, and the McKibben forecast, the line graphs, trend in parallel. The McKibben forecast does not, however, include students in our out-of-district placements, while our projections do. The FY '20 school budget is essentially a level-service budget that funds contract obligations, special education mandates, and professional development, as well as additional staff needed for enrollment growth, the ongoing work to ensure safe and supportive schools, and interventions, and supports to help all students achieve proficiency benchmarks.
across race, class, culture, language, gender identity, sexual orientation, learning differences, and age, and have safe and supportive learning communities in all of our schools. Acting on that commitment, and with the support of AEF, we have trained over three-hundred staff members in youth mental health first aid this year. Enrollment continued to grow this year. In the last three years, the district has grown by about seven hundred students. In the last six years, over a thousand. In the next five years, an additional six hundred students are expected to enroll. This chart demonstrates the pattern. Both the district's projections, the bar graphs, and the McKibben forecast, the line graphs, trend in parallel. The McKibben forecast does not, however, include students in our audit district placements while our projections do. The FY twenty school budget is essentially a level-service budget that funds contract obligations, special education mandates, and professional development, as well as additional staff needed for enrollment growth, the ongoing work to ensure safe and supportive schools, and interventions, and supports to help all students achieve proficiency benchmarks. The town appropriation amount shown in this chart has increased from the amount in the budget report that you received by four-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-five-hundred dollars due to a change in the enrollment growth factor calculation approved by the Finance Committee. Grant amounts are expected to remain flat, and fee and reimbursements are expected to increase about two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. The overall percentage increase in revenue from FY nineteen to FY twenty is six-point-six-nine percent. I want to apologize that there was a typo error on the Budget at a Glance chart, page twenty-two, in the report you received. In addition, the chart does not reflect this additional four-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand dollars. So the corrected, which is this slide here, Budget at a Glance chart is on the back table. The next graphic shows the relative revenue proportions in the school budget. As you can see, most of the revenue comes from town appropriation. The next graphic shows how different spending categories have changed over the last five years. Virtually all revenue increases have gone toward funding teaching and learning at the elementary and secondary level and special education. Administration costs, curriculum materials, and noneducational expenses have remained relatively flat over the last five years. So, in closing, we ask tonight for your approval of the School Department's FY twenty budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bodie. Mr. Dice, you've already spoken once on the article. You have to wait till everyone else has a second chance. That's by our bylaws. All right, we're going to go through the budgets, one by one. If you want to discuss a budget, yell "hold." If not, I'll start taking hands after I go through all the budgets. I'm going to read off each budget for each, as shown in Appendix B, page B four. What? On the FinCom report, page B four in the back. Oh, B one. It's Appendix B. B one. You find them? Okay. All right. So I'll start off, if you wish to discuss a budget, yell "hold." If you don't, just let it go. Finance Committee. Select Board. Town Manager. Human Resources. Information Technology. Comp controller. Treasurer Collector. Postage. Board of Assessors. Legal. Town Clerk. Board of Registars. Parking. Planning Community Development. Redevelopment Board. Zoning Board of Appeals. Public Works. And the public works are several sub-budgets. Facilities. Facilities. Police Services. Fire Services. Inspections. Education. Libraries. Health and Human Services. Retirement. Insurance. Excuse me, Reserve Fund. And on the Reserve Fund, there are... Those are separate, Water and Sewer, Recreation, those are all in the Reserve Fund? Ed Burns Arena? Yeah, these are all Reserve Fund. Enterprise? Enterprise? Yeah, I'm calling them off. Okay, Water and Sewer, Recreation, Ed Burns Arena, Council on Aging Transportation, Arlington Youth Counseling Center, and that's it. Okay, so the first one that was held... Now, Mr. Dice has made a motion. We're going to deal with that when we take the final call and do all the votes at once. Now, first one that was held was Select Board. Who wanted to address the Select Board? Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct Eight. This is really just a question. I... Seems to me I read in the newspaper that the Select Board approved the expenditure of ten thousand dollars so that the manager could join the mayor's coalition. And did that come out of the Select Board's budget? And is that in their budget this year?
Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. That's actually budgeted in the Town Manager's budget and also partially carried in the Community Development Block grant budget under the Administrative Services.
I see. Well, and I guess I can't address it under this budget, but I would hope that someone would move to remove that budget, because I don't think we need to belong to the mayor's coalition, because we're not a city, we're a town. Thank you.
Mr. Paluso?
My name is Ted Paluso, I'm from Precinct Six. I got a stupid question.
Right into the microphone, Ted.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's... For an accountant, it's a very stupid question. So, we're going to be asking people to vote on an override, which would result in five-point-five million dollars, right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And when I look at the budget that shows what we would do with some money, okay? That if the override is passed, I only see like eight-hundred, nine-hundred thousand dollars. So I guess the assumption is, I don't know where it's shown, the assumption is if we had an override of five-point-five million dollars, something like four million plus would go into the Reserve Fund. Am I right? So accordingly, when we're pushing... So no, I'm not as stupid as I thought. So accordingly, when we're pushing for approval of the override, I think it's important for us to emphasize that we ain't spending the money this year. You know, it's really amazing. When you talk about we're raising your taxes five-point-five million dollars, you got to tell the people, "But guess what? We're not going to spend it." And I think you might get more votes. We're not going to spend it for a while. That's all.
Mr. Tosti, do you want to explain how that's going to work? And Mr. Dice, if you had another question, you can ask it.
That is correct. The... There will be three sums of money actually directly appropriated for the schools and DPW and for Council on Aging and Transportation. The rest of the money, under Article seventy-seven in the warrant, will be under... If there was no override, we would have to be taking out about two-point-four, two-point-five million dollars out of the override stabilization fund to be used to balance the budget. If there is an override, it will cover that two-million-five-hundred thousand, and then in addition, we'll be putting about two-point-two million into the override stabilization to cover the spending over the next four years.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the Selectman? Selectman's budget? Well, that's Article seventy-seven. So if we're going to talk about the override, we should either decide to do it all now or wait till the proper article, which would probably be right. So let's just talk about the budgets right now. So anyone else on the Select Board budget? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. The next one that was held was Town Manager budget. Who held Town Manager? Anyone? Going once, twice. Okay. Gone. Comp controller. Mr. Jamison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct Twelve. I just want to make the membership aware of a little bit of process for the budget, as well as a wonderful report that the comp controller puts out, which is why I roast, put my hand up to speak at this budget. The overall process, for those of you who are not aware, of the budget formation begins with the Long Range Planning Committee, which meets in the fall through the winter. Then the Finance Committee takes over, and they prepare the budgets that we have before us. In my water bill, I recently got this nice report, four-page report, the Public Annual Finance Report, which people can find online, for those who didn't get it, in the Finance and Budget area. And the question that always comes up often from people is, "What we see here are the budgets." And the retrospective presented by the FinCom report is the budgets. But folks, if you go... I have a hard copy, but you can go online and look at the audit reports on the financial section, and you can actually look at what was spent last year, as of about November or December of the year after the closing of the fiscal year at the end of June. So this is a really good tool for Town Meeting members for the future. And thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I thank the comp controller and the Town Manager for putting out this enhanced, detailed report. The spending stuff starts about page ninety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the comp controller budget? Okay, that ends the comp controller. Next, Treasurer Collector. Mr. Trembley.
Mr. Trembley, Precinct Nineteen. I went down to the Treasurer's Office a couple of weeks... A few weeks ago, I guess, to pay my excise tax bill, and discovered that I had missed getting a thirty-dollar fine for not paying it on time by like a day. And I said, "Wait a second, I didn't get a card in the mail warning me." And she said, "Oh, we don't do that anymore." And I thought, "Oh, really? I wonder how many people know that?" So, Mr. Moderator, I've also heard that the town is thinking about putting that back, giving people a little warning if they're going to get fined thirty dollars for missing their excise tax bill by a day. Is that true? Or is that... Is this the new norm?
Is that Treasurer Collector here? Yes.
Phyllis Marshall, I'm the Town Treasurer. The cards did go out this year. I don't know why you didn't get yours, but they were mailed to everyone.
Oh, I was told they didn't send them out anymore.
They were... They went out.
Oh, good. So is that going to continue?
Sure.
Okay. So, in other words, I'm totally wrong.
The cards were mailed to everyone. We still have people who are coming in because they got their cards and not their bills, but the town is required to mail them, and we hope that they all get delivered, as they're supposed to be. But the obligation under the statute is to provide you with the bill, and some people did not get it, and that's why the cards are helpful.
Well, I guess I stand corrected for being completely wrong, and sorry about that. Sorry about wasting your time.
Thank you, Mr. Trembley. Thank you, ma'am. Anything else on Treasurer Collector? Okay, the next budget to address would be Board of Assessors. Ms. Deontel.
Timor Kaiyantar, Precinct Seven. Mr. Moderator, regarding assessors, I rise to introduce a constituent, Kathleen Maloon. She has concerns about the recent increase in assessments and property taxes, and I have heard similar concerns from many others in town. As is her right as a resident of Arlington, she would like to express her views, ask questions, and hear the facts. I cede the remainder of my time to her.
Okay. Ma'am? Name and address for the record, please.
Yes. My name is Kathleen Maloon. My address is Seven Webster Street, and I'm in Precinct Seven. I'd like to thank Timor for giving me this opportunity to speak at this town meeting. I'm here tonight to ask that the Town Meeting members help control the escalating property taxes in Arlington. This is an important issue for maintaining affordable living situation for the residents of Arlington. The residents of Arlington rely on our elected Town Meeting members and Select Board to represent all of the residents of Arlington equally in managing Arlington's budget, expenses, laws, bylaws, policies, in a way that maintains a community that is affordable for all of the residents of Arlington. My family has lived in Arlington for over forty years. Many of my neighbors have lived in Arlington for two generations. I want to share with you my personal situation regarding my property assessment and tax increase, as it is an example of what is happening for a number of the residents in Arlington. This year, my property taxes increased sixteen percent, and last year, my taxes increased six percent, which is twenty-two percent in two years. I spoke with a number of my neighbors who also had increases this year between sixteen to twenty percent, which was a shock to them. My tax bill showed the assessed value of my house was unchanged from the prior year. However, the assessed value of my land increased dramatically. I contacted the Assessors' Office regarding my tax increase and the assessed value of my land. The Assessors' Office explained the assessment process and how the property tax system under Proposition Two and a Half works. The Assessors' Office also told me about abatement and deferral options. My concern regarding abatements and our deferrals is that these are only temporary fixes and not solutions to property taxes which are escalating out of control. However, I did apply for an abatement review through the Town Assessors' Office. The Assessors' Office contacted me and said they needed to inspect my house to decide on the abatement. When I asked why my house needed to be inspected when only my land was assessed higher, I was advised that this was required as part of the abatement process. I was also told, quote, "You can refuse an inspection." When I explained I wasn't saying I was refusing an inspection, I was just trying to understand how inspecting my house would change this land assessment, I received the same response, quote, "You can refuse an inspection." As the Assessors' Office's response did not seem to make sense and did not raise... And it raised some serious questions in my mind about the assessment process, I did not give permission for home inspection. My abatement request was denied. I also attended the Select Board meeting to address my concern about the double-digit -- I also attended the Select Board meeting to address my concern about the double-digit property tax increases. The Select Board indicated they would take, they would bring my concern to town meeting. As I was leaving the Select Board meeting, two people told me their taxes had increased 20% and 30%, respectively. I realize that due to inflation, et cetera, property taxes increase. However, I think it is unreasonable for taxes to increase by double digits for anyone. Also, residents can't be expected to be able to absorb double-digit increases when their wages don't increase by double digits and/or they are living on a fixed income due to retirement or other circumstances. In addition, the property taxes have been escalating at a rate that is much higher than inflation for many years. This is something that needs to be evaluated. The purpose of the property taxes is to provide services such as fire, police, schools, et cetera, and to maintain the infrastructure to support the services that are provided for and used by all of the town residents. My goal here tonight is to request the town meeting members look for better ways to control the town budget and improve the property tax structure so that it truly achieves what Proposition 2.5 was designed to address. Also, so that none of the residents of Arlington receive a double-digit tax increase in any year. A solution needs to be found to the rapidly escalating property taxes. I realize this is a challenging and complex issue. I also realize this may need to be addressed at the state level for part of the solution. In the meantime, I believe we need to do whatever can be done at the town level to control the budget, keep the tax increases under double digits, and maintain property tax equity for all the residents of Arlington. I truly appreciate all the time and effort of the town members, and thank you for listening to my concern.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh, thank you, ma'am.
Should I step away?
Yep. Can we hear from the assessors regarding her request?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Winstanley O'Connor, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. First, let me address the issue regarding the denial of the abatement. We operate pursuant to rules of the Department of Revenue and the Appellate Tax Board, Rules and Regulations. When someone requests an abatement, we are required to do an inspection. You may refuse to let us into your property. You don't just get to appeal your land. It's an overall evaluation. We explained, Mr. Tierney, who's the Director of Assessments, explained that we need to get in there. The goal of the Assessors' Office is to have fair and complete information. By not letting us in, we had to deny the abatement. And even if we had granted it, it would have been denied at the Appellate Tax Board because not being allowed in is an automatic dismissal of an abatement application. So we need to get in there to get fair and accurate information. That's the purpose of the inspection. You all have the right to say no, but you have to live with what we come up with if you don't let us in. Now, as to the issue of the values in this town, we use sales. And I think everybody in this room knows exactly what's been going on in the town of Arlington. We haven't had, years ago, we never had a home that sold for $1 million. Now that seems to be more of the case. We use actual sales, and all of our numbers were certified by the Department of Revenue. So if there's any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Fisher.
Andrew Fisher, Precinct 6. One question is, is it true that for some assessments to go up in one neighborhood means some assessments went down in another neighborhood?
Paul Tierney, Director of Assessments. No assessments went down in any neighborhood at all. If anyone saw a decrease in their taxes, is it because of the lower tax rate from the previous year?
I just thought, I'm just doing a reality check. I just thought out of common sense that if the entire lump sum of all our taxes together can't go up more than 2.5%, if some went up 30%, then others would have to go up not as much.
Like I said, they decreased because of the tax rate. Doesn't mean their assessment went down, though.
So the tax rate went down? Why did the tax rate go down?
Because the values went up.
And is, the other thing, again, a reality check. Is it true that if there are no, if there is no turnover in one section of town, does that section then not have its assessments go up?
I'm sorry, I'm just not sure what you mean by turnover.
If there is no turnover in one neighborhood or section of town?
You mean sales? Sales in that particular neighborhood? Then no, we wouldn't have any grounds to change the assessment in that particular neighborhood.
Okay. Because I know for a fact, a few years ago, I was told that some went up and some went down, but if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I just wanted to comment that, to me, the amounts of the property tax has gotten so high that it's way more problematic. It's the only tax that's without, it's not commensurate with income. It's just wrong. It's a taxation according to a mathematical formula. Except for overrides, it's not taxation with representation, so I truly think we should fix it. Thank you.
Mr. Tostie, do you want to enlighten us as to the issue?
Just to, under Proposition 2.5, the total taxes of the town that results from the decisions of this body can only go up 2.5%. But that doesn't mean individual taxes can only go up 2.5%. So if you have, when they do a revaluation, as they did, and some properties go up 20%, some go up 10%, some go up 5%, maybe some are fairly level, that means your individual taxes can go up more than 2.5%, sometimes way more, and other taxes might go up only a 3% or 2.5% or 2% or even 1%. So, again, there's no guarantee on individual properties. It's only on the whole town. It's on the fair market, fair cash market value of your home, including property and house. It's one number. Now, if the exceptions to that are new growth, so if somebody puts up a brand-new house, that brand-new house gets taxed and added to the 2.5%, so they pay that taxes. It really shouldn't affect everybody else. Now, the other thing that impacts taxes is 2.5 overrides or 2.5 debt exclusions. The debt exclusions, if you'll remember correctly, I think a year ago, maybe it was two years ago, in June, we passed four debt exclusions. We passed, the large one was for the middle school, which I believe was someplace in the range of $25 million. That should have hit this year because the middle school was all rebuilt last year. The Miniman, you just watched the school which is opening, that would have hit, for the most part, last year. They phased it, I think, in three bond issues, but it would have hit also. The Thompson probably would have hit last year because we added the six classrooms. And there was a certain amount for the high school design money, and that probably would have hit last year. So I think the two big factors that are impacting what happened last year was, number one, the debt exclusions that impacted, for the most part, last year, and number two, the revaluation, which means some properties are going up. I don't think any properties go down, but, for example, 6% to 7% of our property value is for a commercial and industrial, and those lands generally don't go up very much. So you could have an industrial or a commercial section that, whose taxes probably hasn't increased much in the last 20 years. And that was one reason, sometimes every once in a while, somebody wants to go to classification, which means hitting those higher. But when you only have 6%, it's hardly worth it. And the last thing we want to do is tamp down on commercial or retail or industrial growth. But those are the two big reasons it's happening. And lastly, the Finance Committee, the town, the schools would be more than happy to reduce property taxes if somebody could figure out a way that we don't add 100 to 200 new students every single year. We have to deal with it. We had to add the classrooms to the Thompson. We had to reopen the middle school, and we had to have more money in the school budget to hire teachers for that. Somebody figure out a way to turn that around, and we'll be happy to have tighter control on taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Revulak.
Steve Revulak, 111 Sunnyside Avenue. I do have a couple of questions for the Assessor, just to make sure I'm, myself, am clear on the process that we use for determining assessments. So my understanding, is that better? Okay. My understanding is that really property taxes are a big division problem with a lot of constraints and oversight. But essentially, we'll take the amount to be spent from the general tax, then you take the total amount of assessed property in mils, you know, per $1,000, and then you essentially divide to get dollars per mil. Is that an accurate summation? So in...
He nodded yes.
He nods yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Tierney. So in, and during, from year-to-year adjustments, they're based on sales in a given neighborhood?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And generally, the sale value, the tax rate trails the sale value by two years. So for 2019, you're really using 2017 sales as a basis for making adjustments. Now, your office put out a nice little report earlier this year, when, you know, that showed how, by tax neighborhood, how the different rates went up and went down. So is it, is it, would it be, I, as the earlier speaker mentioned, it seems like a lot of the increases are due to land, the cost of land. Is that, is that correct?
You want to come up to the mic?
Paul Tierney, Director of Assessments. Yes, when we do our sales analysis, we run a report, we check the land sales, and then through, after that, we check, we check by building, style of the building, price quartiles, sale quartiles, the age of the building, and whatever we think needs the most work, which, to get our values where they need to be. As has turned out lately, it has been the land.
Lately, it's been the land. So is it fair to say that the property taxes an individual owner pays is effectively, you know, the portion of their property relative to the total town property? So if you have, you know, if you have a house that's worth twice as much as your neighbor, you'll pay twice as much taxes. It's a proportional thing.
Yeah, essentially.
Okay. And on business side, Mr. Tostie mentioned, we have, or mentioned, you know, it sounds like the assessments are done in a similar manner?
Yes.
Are there any other, any sources of tax revenue for businesses outside of the assessments?
I'm not sure. What do you mean by tax?
I mean, is it, are businesses taxed on, like, volu, like, cash flow amount of sales?
No, but they are, they are taxed on their personal property, the equipment they use in the conduct of business.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, so basically, the end conclusion is that land is become expensive during the last few years.
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tierney. Gentleman back here in the white shirt.
Dave Levy, Precinct 18, 95 Rhine Cliff Street. I have a question about how assessments are done with land value or home value. Do you count developers or LLCs in the purchase analysis? How do you, how do those come into play?
Mr. Tierney?
Paul Tierney, Director of Assessments. When you say that, are you asking if a developer or an LLC buys a home?
Correct.
If they are planning to tear it down or renovate it completely, the first sale would not count. The second sale would, if they ended up reselling it.
Okay, so only the resale counts for both?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you. I guess, I would just make one final comment. I want to echo your point. I'm sorry about the increase that you received. I do think it's unfair that when you live in a neighborhood, as long as you do, if all of a sudden the value of your property tax has to go up because an LLC, which is differently funded from how you make income on a year-to-year basis, can afford to buy a house nearby, tear it down, increase it, you can't be afforded, you can't be asked to step up to the same levels of tax that an LLC or something else can do. It just isn't fair. I think that you need to have some form of mechanism that when you buy your house for a certain value, it should rise like everyone else's, but you cannot be expected to do this. I watched this happen to my grandparents, who are both suffering, and it just was unbelievable that sales like this could occur. And it isn't fair. And if we're going to do this, and we're going to ask the town for more money, which I think we should, we need to find a much more equitable way to do it. It isn't fair. You couldn't afford it. You got your job. You raised your kids like you're supposed to do. That's all we can ask. I can't hold you responsible because an LLC wants to tear your neighbor's house down and build a brand-new one. So we have to find a better way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holland? For what purpose do you rise, Mr. Tully?
I have a point of information, sir. I'm reminded of the wise words of your predecessor, who repeatedly instructed us that town meeting is not a debating society. Are we not debating Article 9 under Budgets, Board of Assessors? We are debating. And not debating all things tax-related?
I think everybody so far has talked about things having to do with assessments.
We're talking about the Assessors' budget, sir.
Well, they have nowhere else in the warrant to ask questions about assessments. So I think we have to give them a little leeway if they have assessment questions because they have nowhere else to ask it. I can't cut F for everything. Mr. Holland?
Roderick Holland, Precinct 7. The thing that we have heard about in the last 15 minutes or so, I've heard about from a number of constituents in Precinct 7, and this is a hot issue. And, you know, I've lived in this town for many years. The first house I bought here was this little, what they call a tiny house now, on Woodside Lane. For $29,000, I remember looking at it when the snow from the blizzard of '78 was still there. Managed to climb up and have a look. Sold it two years later for $50,000. Bought a house on Kimball Road for $100,000. Sold that a number of years later for $400,000. So the, you know, the updraft is wonderful if you're in the market.
Does this have to do with Assessors' budget? Or is it a nice story, like Mr. Tully says?
Yeah, no, no, no.
Let's keep it, let's keep it in the Assessors' budget if I'm giving a little leeway here.
Yeah, so, 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 look, to get to the point, what we've heard from the Board of Assessors is that they determine valuations in neighborhoods based on sales. And that's interesting. Neighborhoods don't sell houses. People sell houses. So, you know, I have neighbors who have been living in their houses for decades. They have no intention of selling. They're not in the market, but they're on this elevator. It would be interesting to hear from the Board of Assessors or from the town council if there is a lawful assessment strategy that could take into account sales that have happened and sales that are not likely to happen. In other words, if someone is stable as a resident, they want to live in the house. They're not on the market. Are we going to assess them as if they are house flippers? That seems a little irrational, and I think that is driving this source of discontent, which frankly, we can ill afford at a time when we're going to the citizens of the town for a rather large... for a rather large bill.
Ms. Winstanley, can you answer his question?
We are required to use mass appraisal standards, um, that are established, uh, to submit our information to the Department of Revenue. And we need to look at data as follows. The general neighborhood that a home is in when we do the assessments, the specific site and the improvements to this site and comparable sales, um, to ascertain what the values are. Now, the Massachusetts courts have said that the assessors and the towns and cities are required to assess at full and fair cash value, that to do anything, everyone, to do anything other than that is unconstitutional. So we use mass appraisal standards to come to those assessments. We understand, we don't set the tax rate, we just value the properties based on the data and the information, uh, that we have. It's, uh, we try to be as accurate as possible. There are occasions where there may be some information when someone comes in for an abatement, for instance, your yard may be all ledge. We don't necessarily know that. We take that into consideration, you know, on your valuation. You may be on Mystic Lake. That adds to your value if you have a lake view. So there are all kinds of factors that go into it, but we can't say this person's lived there for 50 years, we can't give them the same increase. We have to treat everyone the same way.
So if I remember history, this is the 100% valuation issue that came through after two and a half as a kind of partial remedy, uh, for it. And, you know, I just ask again, and this is something that bears study, is there a legal way-
Doug.
-to avoid treating everybody as if they are on the market all the time?
Is there a way to do unfair taxation?
Doug Heim, Town Council. I think first and foremost, um, we all appreciate the difficulty that this issue presents. It's not an attempt to sort of pass the buck. The real difficulty here is that the tax assessment process and criteria are set by state law. What the town can do, has done in the past, and is proposing to do, is to try to find special legislation means of providing tax relief. Whether we can push the boundaries of that tax relief farther than we have is a subject for the debate of, uh, your elected officials and of course, for town meeting. Uh, but it's very difficult for me to imagine special legislation that is for one, feasible in a legal manner, but two, feasible before the legislature to give Arlington an alternate means of essentially performing its tax assessments. Thank you.
Okay, it's 9:30. When we come back, there's several people on the list, but let's kind rail it into the assessors and this. Mr. Ward, and I'll put you on the list. So take our 10-minute break.
Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct 15.
Right into the mic. Oh, just speak right into it.
Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct 15.
Oh, okay.
And I have a question for the assessors regarding, um, how they evaluate land, because I too have experienced a huge hike in my evaluation of my land. And I live in R1 district, as many of you do, where after a point, when you, the, the property is restricted to only a single-family home, um, after a point, having excess land really doesn't contribute to the value of the property. Because you can't put townhouses on it, you can't build duplexes on it, you can only put another one-family house on that property. So I'm wondering if you, Mr. Moderator, if you could ask the assessors why after a point, um, the value of the land, just in terms of acreage, just keeps on going up?
Ms. Winstanley?
Sales in the neighborhood. We look at, I think you're in Neighborhood 5, um, and we had quite a number of sales in Neighborhood 5, 31. We use that information in arriving at the value for your neighborhood.
I don't know what neighborhood I'm in, but, um-
What street again? What street?
Oh, I'm, I'm on Hazel Terrace. I don't know what neighborhood that is, but I'm just, um-
We use sales.
You use sales, all right. Thank you.
Okay, um, I was supposed to announce earlier that if anyone needs it, there's hearing assistant devices back on the clerk's table in the back. So if anyone either on the gallery or the town meeting members need a hearing assistant device, there are some in the back. Ms. LaCourt, you are next.
There's a couple of things about tax classification that are worth understanding. Uh, one, most of it is covered by a document that, that deals with the entire tax classification that you can find on the assessor's website. If you go to Assessor and then Tax Information, you will see what's called the recap sheet or the reclassification documentation for, um, how our taxes are set every year for the last few years. There's also a really interesting sheet there that shows you the tax rate going all the way back to 1929. You'll note that in 1982, the dollars per thousand of our tax rate was $78. That is, the taxes you would have paid on a house in Arlington in 1982 was $78 per thousand dollars of value. This year, your tax rate is $11.13, $11.26 per thousand dollars of value. So depending on what happened to your assessment, your taxes might have gone up very little or not at all. Overall, we added 2.5% to our tax base for our normal increase and about another 2%, 2.5% for excluded debt that hit the tax, tax rolls. That also shows on the tax classification sheets if you compare 18 to 19. This will be really clear. Property taxes are not a tax on your income. They're not respectful of your income. Property taxes are a tax on the value of your wealth. For most of us, the bulk of our wealth is in our house, and that's what's being taxed, is the value of our property. The out-of-control sense that we all have about the rate at which our taxes is going up is due to the fact that the value of property in Arlington is going up rapidly. And it's going up differently in different neighborhoods and differently for different styles of houses and so on and so forth. That's not something we can control with a budget process. We actually have a very tight control on revenue in Arlington, except for those times when we vote to raise our taxes. More than that, we literally cannot raise the levy limit more than 2.5% a year, except for our excluded debt, which we all voted to take on to cover the construction of school buildings for the most part. So I think it's worth looking at those documents and trying to kind of grapple with this. Another thing to note is that the first two bills that you receive in a year are estimated bills, and the last two bills you receive in a year are when we actually know what the new tax rate and the new valuation is. So you tend to have a couple of bills that feel like they're really big, and then a couple of bills that are smaller every year. So it can come as a real shock when you get that quarterly bill. I'm hoping this all helps you out and tells you sort of where to look to understand better why it is the taxes are hitting you in a particular way. I encourage you to read those documents.
Thank you. Mr. Moore? Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. Motion to terminate debate on the assessor's budget.
We have motion to terminate debate in the assessor's budget. Have a second. All in favor of terminating debate in the assessor's budget, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No.
It's a 2/3 vote, and I so declare it. Debate is terminated on the assessor's budget. The next budget that was held was Town Clerk, number 11. Who, sir? Mr. Revellak?
Steve Revellak, 111 Sunnyside Avenue, Precinct 1. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I know the, the assessor, or, shift gears, the Town Clerk performs a, you know, a range of duties for us, um, including acting as a custodian for, um, a rather large collection of public records, uh, things like, you know, all the warrant articles we've submitted to this that have gone through town meeting over the years, town meeting transcripts, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm wondering if there has been any thought given to the possibility of digitizing some of those records for preservation and, um, public access?
Madam Clerk? Have you thought about digitizing the records?
We've already thought about it.
As you, she has thought about it, but I don't think it's gone, gone beyond that planning stage.
Well, um, I'd just like to say I appreciate, uh, what the, the work that the Clerk's office does, and I encourage him to think more about digitizing our, you know, our, effectively, our legislative history. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the Town Clerk? Ma'am?
Patty Muldoon, Precinct 20. I just wanted to understand why the registrar voters, uh, is no longer included in, uh, in the budget here. I'm the wrong-
Uh, looks like the registrar has its own budget. Mr. Chapdeline, is there a reason that it was broken out into its own separate budget item this year?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. So there was a position in the Clerk's office dating back to FY 2017. You can see it was a, a part-time position funded at, excuse me, 2018, funded at $5,000. Uh, when that person retired a few years ago, that part-time position was eliminated and absorbed into the rest of the duties of the Town's Clerk's Office. The Board of Registars, the next budget, uh, is where the core of the registrar's work is housed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anything else on the Town Clerk's budget? Seeing none. The next budget that was hold was parking. Sir?
Peter Fuller, Precinct 20. I note that a year ago, we set, we no longer fund the position of Parking Clerk. Traditionally, this was an appointment of the Select Board as a side job for the Treasurer Collector. So my questions are, who is now performing this function and where in the budget is the funding for it?
Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. From a long-term point of view, uh, we, we're still working through where we want the Parking Clerk duties to reside operationally. They still reside in the Treasurer Collector's Office, and when we converted from an elected Treasurer to a professional Treasurer, we put the Treasurer's salary into our Pay and Classification Plan and encompassed all the duties, uh, of the Treasurer into one salary rather than having a salary plus a Parking Clerk stipend. So all, all of that cost is now carried in the Treasurer Collector's budget.
Very clear. Thank you.
Anyone else on Parking? Uh, Mr. Yontar?
Timor Kai Yontar, Precinct 7. Mr. Moderator, I, in, looking in the budget, it shows the costs, but I couldn't find this in the budget for Parking. I'd like to know how much revenue the town raises in Parking fines.
Parking fines? Someone know that?
Fines, yeah. You know, when people get a ticket because they overstayed their welcome in a, uh, two-hour parking zone.
One second.
Ballpark just-
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. In FY 2018, our actuals were $426,489. Year before that was $390,000. We carry an estimated budget each year of $350,000 for Parking violations.
Thank you, Mr. Chapdeline. There was a recent federal court judgment, Taylor versus Saginaw, Michigan, that ruled that chalking car tires is an unreasonable and unconstitutional trespass. And that's how you enforce it if you don't have a meter. Given this, um, Mr. Moderator, does the town have a plan to enforce Parking rules in the non-measured parts of town and to continue to raise revenues? Because the revenue, uh, figure is substantial.
Mr. Hoytheim?
Doug Heim, Town Council. That's a really curious decision, if you take time to read it. It's based on the idea that, um, it's built on a case where, uh, police had installed a GPS device onto somebody's car unwittingly, and then applied that trespass of privacy onto chalking a car, as it was the same thing. I, I will note that that decision is not binding on this circuit. Until it's binding on this circuit, I don't think that there's any mandate for us to change our policy. We may want to do that anyway, but I just want to make it clear that this is a federal circuit court decision, it's not our circuit. The rationale is likely to be tested, uh, in this kind, in our, in our circuit, but until that time, I'm not, I'm not sure that it's something that we, that we have to worry about in the immediate run. There may be policy reasons to do it, but I don't think that there's a legal mandate at this point in time.
Okay. Glad to hear we still have the revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Heim. Anyone else on Parking? Okay, that ends the Parking budget. The next one that was held, Public Works. And all its sub-budgets. Who wants to discuss Public Works? Mr. Trembley? How much salt did you use? Mr. Radamaka?
Ed Trembley, Precinct 19. You're quite right.
Mike Radamaka, Director of Public Works. Last, uh, winter, we used approximately 6,600 tons at a cost of about $450,000.
Wow, so we, we saved, uh, $600,000 or so over some other years when we spent, uh, something like a million dollars on salt.
It was a different winter.
It was a different winter. Um, and, and, and I, and I, I think I detected at the end of the, uh, winter that we were making more use of the metering devices on the Sanders, because it seemed to me the, uh, by the end of the winter, we were using a much more appropriate amount of salt on the roads than, uh, some of the earlier snowstorms. Mr. Moderator, I'm going to take this opportunity, since I'm up here, to, to bother people with some, some more, uh, nasty facts. Uh, we did, we had a certain amount of talking about, uh, assessments and how much, uh-
No, that's, Ed-
No, hold on, hold on.
Keep it in Public Works.
I'm going to get to that, I'm going to get that, uh, I'm going to get to that. But I will point out, and, and my apologies, Mr. Radamaka, because I think you're worth every dime we pay you. Every year, the, the pay rates of all town employees go up, and it goes up a fair amount. You know, 6%, 5%, 4%? This isn't rocket science. We vote for this stuff, and if the town is constrained to 2.5% and the salaries are going up at 4%, 5%, 6%, I don't know, I'm no financial genius, but something, somehow that doesn't work. Thank you.
Mr. Poehler, then Mr. Toasty?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sandy Poehler, Deputy Town Manager, and, um, the, the B part of the AB team of Karen Malloy and I, who do the collective bargaining here. I'd say she's the A part. I just do the money backup. It may seem that there is, uh, a number of very large increases this year, but that's because, uh, the Finance Committee report does not take into consideration the settlements that have happened from one year to the next. So you're basically seeing two years of salary increase in one, in this book. What the Finance Committee report shows is the budgets as they were voted originally, not as they were affected by the salary increases that came about because of- not as they were affected by the salary increases that came about because of collective bargaining. So they're about half what they appear to be in these numbers.
Mr. Tostie, do you have anything to add to that?
In addition, the last contract that was signed, or probably the one before, was a 2-2-1 contract. So, you know, that's, the contracts that have been signed over the last many years have always been in that 2% range. Now, public employees also get some steps. In the town side, I think it's five steps. So when you first start in a job, if you start at entry level, you're getting steps which can be any place from 3% to 5% because you're learning the job over the first four to five years. After you get to the top step, then all you get is cost of living. And so I just wanted to add that to what Mr. Poehler said about the Finance Committee, which I pointed out that first year, that there is a double jump, or what perceives is a double jump, but that's not actually the case because of the way the FinCom report is set up.
Thank you, sir. Ms. LaCourt?
Annie LaCourt, Precinct 15. I have a question for the Director of Public Works, if it pleased the moderator. Is that all right?
Yeah, go ask the question.
Mr. Radamacher, when you're determining the components of your budget every year, how do you go about deciding what resources you need to accomplish all of the tasks that DPW is taxed with? And how do you determine whether or not you need to add resources or services, or how you're going to make your resources stretch to the job?
Mr. Radamacher?
Mike Radamacher, Director of Public Works. My boss tells me what resources I have.
I understand that part.
No, seriously, we look at the previous years and the work we have done, and things we look to improve upon, different line items, different services we provide, and we make changes in that regard.
Okay. Are you continually trying to improve your efficiency and reduce your costs?
Yes, but, I mean, is there a specific area?
No, I'm just trying to get a general impression of whether or not you're making best effort to do those things, since the question of rises in the budget has been raised.
Sure. Yes, I would hope I do, yes.
Okay, thank you. I would like to point out that, yes, our employees, our hard-working DPW employees who do things like make sure the water comes into your house and the sewage leaves it, that the streets in front of you are safe and clean, that you can get out of your driveway on a snow day, and that when a microburst hits your street, it gets cleared of trees as quickly as possible, that all of those workers, every year, their costs go up at the same rate that your costs go up. If your electricity bill went up, so did theirs. If the cost of food for you went up, so did theirs. If the cost of their children's shoes went up, just the same way that the cost of your children's shoes went up. I think that it is fair for our employees to receive raises every year, and I think that in terms of retaining people with skills, that some of those raises are relative to their increases in skills is important. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on Public Works? Sir? Mr. Sharp?
Ted Sharp, Precinct 7. Could we rotate the street sweeping schedule each season? I'm on the last darn route, and I get missed quite a number of seasons. Why can't we just rotate the schedule? Thank you.
Mr. Radamacher? Next year, can you run the schedule backwards?
Mike Radamacher, Public Works. We do set the schedule based on the amount of litter, or tree litter or whatnot, we see in certain neighborhoods. So there is a method to the madness, but I'm happy to talk offline if there's a particular area that needs to be addressed. We do get to all the routes, and if we don't, we start up where we left off at the next available opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on Public Works and all the sub-budgets under it? Seeing none? The next one that was held is Fire Services. Who wanted to address Fire Services? Mr. Fiore?
Peter Fiore, Precinct 2. I looked for you, Chief, at the break, and I couldn't find you, so I was going to give you a heads up. I had contacted the chief earlier about questions about propane use in Arlington. I don't mean for your gas grill, you know, like heating houses, the way people have natural gas and oil. And he gave me great answers, very, very quick and very thorough, and I appreciated it. And, but since then, it's occurred to me, another question, Chief, Mr. Moderator for the chief, and that is, the trucks that deliver this propane, I'm just curious what kind of training and preparation or monitoring is done for the delivery trucks. And the reason I even bring this up is that this house across from the Hardy School now has propane, and that truck's going to be delivering propane there. And I know at least in one neighboring community, they don't allow propane because they don't want the trucks in the community. I know this isn't your call, it's clearly, it's a bylaw and public policy, but you could just reassure me and maybe some of the neighbors what goes into dealing with that.
Chief Jefferson?
Bob Jefferson, Fire Chief. I actually can't answer that question. The delivery of all that propane is governed by state regulations, and I couldn't tell you what their exact policies and procedures are, but most of the companies that we're dealing with in town that do deliver in this town or do set up propane tanks for home heating and what have you, they're all very reputable, they all must go to the state standards. I cannot answer that question as to what those exact standards are.
In terms of the training and preparation, because like you said in the zoning article, your department can deal with anything, and I believe that, but it's also because you drill and you train for it. What would you be doing to prepare for the unthinkable, you know, if there is an accident involving one of these trucks?
We drill and train for propane. You know, right from the start of the Mass Fire Academy, we have propane training out there. Other ones, our members will go back and they'll retrain during the year, and then we have our own internal training. Basically, you deal with it a little bit different than a house fire. You have to cool it, you have to set it down, you have to shut off the sewer. So my people are all very well-trained in that. It's, again, right from the beginning of your career, that's what you're trained in, and we continually train in it. But as far as the delivery of the service and what those drivers are trained in, I cannot answer that, you know, off the hook. I could look it up, but I can't give you that answer tonight. But this is what, again, I hate to be cavalier about it, but this is what we do. You take that $12,000 tank, a 12,000 gallon tank that rolled over a couple of years ago down in Mystic Valley Parkway, we dealt with it, and that's what it is. And again, if there was a propane issue, we'd deal with it.
Okay.
I'll be more than happy to look into the training that those delivery people have and that those companies respond to far and get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. And I also want to say, I've got three minutes, I won't use it, that I, the department does a great job. I, you know, my mother had a medical emergency in October, and the firefighters that came in to deal with it, top-notch, professional, kind, caring. We are very fortunate to have a lot of great, a lot of great public employees in this town. So thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Thank you, Chief Jefferson. Anyone else on Fire Services? Seeing none? Inspections. Who wished to address inspections? Someone held it? Changed mind? Okay. Going once, twice, gone. Education. Who held the education budget? Mr. Jameson? Mr. Deist, after him?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jameson, Precinct 12. To tag on to my previous show-and-tell, this is a huge document that has all sorts of information on every department, what they did this year, what they hope to do next year, their budgets, their people. We used to get copies when it was first put out, but it's online. It's the annual financial plan put out by the manager's office, and you can learn almost, you can learn a huge amount about the town by this in addition to those other documents. I rose for the schools, and there was a document put on the back. I spoke with the CFO of the schools. This relates to the school department's report, not to the numbers in our budget books. Just wanted to clarify that. And I was disappointed to hear comments that Arlington is full by several speakers earlier in the meeting that always deflates my opinion of what we're about. And as far as the education budget goes, I did a little back-of-the-envelope calculation. So I read, I believe in their report, or somewhere, maybe in the high school building information, that the school's population has increased by 40% in the last 10 years. So I went back to 2010 and saw what the school budget was then. Little over $38 million. I increased it by 40%, as if it had been a step function. That's $54 million. And then I brought it forward at only 3% per year, and that gets you 72 and 1/2, which is still less than the 71.4 that we're scheduled to provide when the override passes. So if someone were to get up and say that the schools have too much money, I would say that based upon that analysis, they're increasing at 3% after you account for the 40% increase by a different function than we use currently, but by the 40% increase in school population. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Deist?
If you go online and survey what's available in terms of the quality of schools, you'll find that Arlington's schools are in the top 7 or so percent across the state. And of course, Massachusetts has the best schools in the country. By the same token, if you think about the cost per pupil, in other words, the, how much we pay on a per-pupil basis, that's in the lower 30%. So our school system is a tremendous buy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on education? Seeing none? Can move on. Health and Human Services? Ma'am?
Betty Stone, Precinct 7. I am rising to say that I'm delighted to see this new position in Administration, Manager of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And I have a few questions about it, so I'm not sure who can answer those questions. I'm very much in favor of effective outreach, because I think having a workforce that's more diverse for the town is of great benefit to the town, and also, the same goes for the school department. But to start with, for this position, could someone tell me a little bit about what the duties are for this position? And I have a few questions. Do you want me to lay them all out at once, or one at a time?
I'll have her address them as you go. You want to address the first ones?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christine Bonjourno, Health and Human Services Director. The first question was regarding what are some of the duties of the person that will be filling this role? We are in the process still of developing the job description. Obviously, the funding that you will approve, hopefully, will allow us to continue with that process. We hope that this position will cover our ADA Coordinator, which is a role that has been held for over two decades by a person that will be retiring. So it was folded into another role within the community. So it's a crucial position. ADA Coordinator assists all of the departments, as well as the public, with making sure that everybody is compliant with the ADA, which is a federal law that allows basically access to properties. The other role is to work with the Disability Commission, as well as the Human Rights Commission and the Rainbow Commission. So this individual will work with all of those groups. Again, we're sort of working out the specific duties within each of those roles.
Thank you. Can you speak to whether or not there's an intended coordination, collaboration with the school department in terms of diversifying the teaching and counseling and support staff? Because I think one of the huge benefits of, it's a question of how you describe each of these elements, diversity, equity, inclusion. And I know it's a very big order for one person who I am assuming is a full-time employee?
It is three-quarters full-time. So it is not entirely full-time this year. Perhaps in the future, if town meeting allows, we could certainly look at that, obviously, with the town manager's approval.
Okay. So can you speak to the part about how the collaboration and coordination might extend to, I'm hoping and assuming maybe there's a person in the school department who does that? Because I think all the kids in this town need to, all the kids in this town should have role models and mentors who look like they do. And I think it would be a benefit to all of us, adults and kids alike.
So luckily, the school department has invited me to participate on their Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion group that is made up of administration from across the district. I don't want to speak too much, this is Kathy Bodie's project, but it is led by the Assistant Superintendent, and there are a number of teachers and school staff that are part of this. The passion that I see in this group is energizing, and I'm really excited for the person that will be in this town role to be a part of that. They're working on, you know, big strategic thinking across the district, which is exciting. And again, I don't want to steal Dr. Bodie's thunder, but it is an exciting time for this position to be partnering with the schools to move this initiative forward.
Very good to hear that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bonjourno. Thank you, Ms. De. Ma'am?
Hi, Mona Mendel, Precinct 9. I'm a part of some of the initiatives with diversity and inclusion that's been organized by a lot of parent-led groups across all the different elementary schools and even in the middle schools. So I was wondering, when you were talking about some of these positions, you didn't mention the DIGS or the Diversity Task Group, and I was wondering if there's any collaboration? Because there's a lot of interest within the parent community to be focusing on diversity and inclusion. So I was wondering if you had any thoughts on that?
Ms. Bonjourno?
Thank you. Again, Christine Bonjourno, Health and Human Services Director. So the DIGS are a part of the district-wide strategic group that meets all of the administrative team. So Carlos Hoyt, who is the person that's organizing the DIGS, coordinates that district-wide administrative team that's working on diversity issues as well. So there is that overlap. The Diversity Task Group, I know, is not included under this role, but obviously works closely with the Human Rights Commission, which is one of the commissions that this position, this town-funded position, will be working with. I don't know if that answers your question.
Is there any, is this person who's going to be in this position also going to be collaborating with these two groups, which are very, also passionate within the community, to be working on diversity and inclusion? Because these are not currently included. So I just.
So, again, Christine Bonjourno, Health and Human Services. The DIGS are a part of the school department, and this position is part of the town. We do have that overlap. This person will be sort of a liaison to the schools. I can't say this person will be working within the DIGS, because there are seven, seven or more DIG, Diversity, Inclusion groups in the schools, but obviously... But obviously, this person will be very involved with the district team, the leadership team. So in essence, yes, they'll be involved.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on Health and Human Services? Anyone else under this budget? Okay. Insurance?
Pass.
Pass. Anyone else on insurance? That brings us to... I don't think any other budgets were held. Anyone have any other comments on any of the budgets that we've already discussed? If not, we're ready for a vote. First, we're going to vote on Mr. Deist's motion. We have little motion forms. So Mr. Deist has a motion. Mr. Deist's motion, he is asking that we only vote -- three of the budgets have a secondary vote. Go ahead, Doug. Yeah. Have a secondary vote if the override passes. He doesn't want us to vote on the initial one. Doug, you going to explain it a little better for us?
Doug Hym, Town Council, thank you for indulging me for a moment. I just want to make clear two things. One is, you have a contingent appropriation which satisfies the requirements of the Department of Revenue and the state law. You can vote it, as Mr. Deist is suggesting, as a budget, but if the override fails, I just want to make it very clear to everybody, we have to come back before June 30th because we will have a budget that is essentially not in balance. So I just want folks to understand that you've got basically two votes. You've got a vote on the base budget, and then you've got a vote on the contingency appropriation. If the override passes, it doesn't really matter which way we do this. But if the override fails, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, we have to get back here before June 30th to approve a revised budget. Does that make sense?
Yep. Yes, sir.
How long does it take to call a town meeting?
So there are two approaches that you could try to have to it. You could adjourn without date, with the idea that we'd be coming back. If you don't do that, then you've got to have the select board have a publicly noticed meeting, which is 48 hours, and then 14 days to call a special town meeting. So unless you adjourn without a specific date, you better be careful because you'd be right at June 28th.
But we would have to come back, then, to dissolve the meeting even if the override passed. Either way, we'd have to come back. Because we have to come back to dissolve at some point.
But if we don't adjourn?
Yeah. Okay. So Mr. Deist's motion?
Point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Warden.
John Warden, Precinct 8. Maybe I missed it, but could we identify the budgets that are affected by Mr. Deist's amendment? We were told there were three of them, and I know one of them was education.
They are Public Works, Education, and...
What did you do?
Council on Aging Transportation Budget. Those three. So first, we're going to vote on Mr. Deist's motion. He moves that we consider only the budgeted based on a successful override. So, Tim, all in favor of Mr. Deist's motion, press 1. If you oppose, press 2. So if you want to only consider the budgets based on the successful override, you'll press 1. If you oppose to that and go with the contingent budget, you'll vote 2. 29 in the positive, 175 in the negative. The motion's defeated. That brings us to the recommended votes of the board -- excuse me, of the Finance Committee as presented in their report. Soon as you're ready, Mr. Lathwood? Isn't that annoying? If you're all in favor of the recommended budget of Finance Committee as printed in their report, press 1 for yes and 2 for no. On the contingency? 207 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. Mr. Hym has instructed me that we have to take a second vote on those three contingent budgets. So we're going to do that right now. All in favor -- oops. Soon as Tim's ready. 2 for no. If you're in favor of the contingent budget based on the override, press 1 for yes, 2 198 in the affirmative, 11 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it, and that closes Article 57, the budgets. That brings us to Article 58. Mr. Foskett?
Charles Foskett, Precinct 8, and Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee. And I'd like to request of the town meeting that I can speak for about 18 minutes.
18?
Yes, sir.
The Capital Planning Committee has a request for 18 minutes. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No.
You have your 18 minutes, sir.
Thank you. First, I'd like to remind town meeting that the vote under Article 58 officially is the vote of the contained in the Finance Committee report, as modified by Mr. Tassi on the first night of town meeting, where we changed some numbering. A version of the vote, which does not require modification, is found in the back of the -- one of the exhibits in the Capital Planning Report that's been handed out. Second, I'd like to express my sincere apologies to Mike Mason, the Chief Financial Officer of the Arlington Public School System and a member of the Capital Planning Committee, who's reported in the Capital Planning Committee as Michael Morse. The -- I think the error arose because Michael Morse was a former member of the Capital Planning Committee when he was Deputy Town Treasurer, and I suspect his name was auto-inserted by Microsoft Word. Nonetheless, it was our error, and I apologize. I think we were on autopilot instead of being wide awake when that occurred. So I'd like to thank the members of the Capital Planning Committee for all the work they've done this year, and I'd ask that they could rise, the members that are here. And I have a -- can I have the next slide, please? This is the first year we've had -- and by the way, these folks have been working basically from September through April. It's the fir -- thank you. This is the first year we've had 11 members giving us some new bench depth. Phyllis Marshall, Treasurer, and Eda Cody, the Comptroller, are the new sheriffs in town, bringing additional financial precision and transparency, which you may note in the expanded detail in the vote of Article 58. Barbara Thornton's long efforts in launching the Facilities Department with the Select Board are starting to reap benefits across the town and throughout the capital plan. This year's report was prepared by Chris Moore, Joe Barr, and Timor Yontar, under the guidance of Brian Rearing, resulting in probably better English and clearer graphics. And Brian Rearing and Sandy Poole, of course, have been guiding the efforts of the budgeting process all year, and we thank Amy Fidalgo, who went on to greener pastures. Next slide, please. There are many details contained in the several hundred items in the capital budget and capital report. And along with members of the town management and the Capital Planning Committee, we'd be happy to answer any specific questions about them. But in this presentation, I'd like to focus on a few issues which we consider of major importance. First, it's the overall capital plan and its relationship to statutory debt capacity, the statutory debt capacity permitted by the state for the town. And the second major subject are three projects contained in this year's capital budget. Number one, the improvements and renovation of the Grove Street Town Yard. Two, the renovation of the central school facility. And three, the plan for expansion and improvement in the infrastructure of Arlington's libraries. And then finally, I'd like to speak a little bit about how we meet our annual budgeting goals. Next slide, please. So the table on that slide is contained in your capital report. We have a capital plan that calls for $89.5 million of expenditure over the next five years. I think most of you are familiar that we refer to cash as the money that's spent out of the direct tax raise each year. Other funding is the monies that come from funds and grants, essentially off-balance sheet. And then bonding is the money which we borrow to pay or acquire projects, but only pay the debt service in each of the ensuing years. A week ago, special town meeting authorized borrowing $290 million to underwrite the rebuilding of the high school. While $80 million is being financed by the MSBA, we still have a substantial staggering amount of $210 million, which is going to be added to our debt. And in light of these obligations, it's important to understand how the town's going to manage the additional $47.4 million of debt that's proposed in the five-year capital plan. In the chart behind us, the top line of Item A3 is the ongoing debt service. That's what we have to pay for essentially past expenditures. The second line, Item D, are the cash expenditures directly purchased each year in the capital plan. And then finally, the bottom line there is B3, is the new debt service arising from the $47.4 million mentioned in the previous slide. So the question is, with the high school project, there's still more debt. How much debt can the town carry? Can I have the next slide, please? So on the -- these slides, by the way, are also in your capital report. The slide on the left shows the trend in non-exempt debt balances, which reflects spending in the various capital budgets. The yellow bars are the prior debt service, and the red bars are the debt service that we anticipate from the $47.4 million expended or borrowed in the five-year plan. On the right, the chart depicts exempt debt, debt which is excluded from Proposition 2 and 1/2 limitations. The blue columns are the prior exempt debt, principally arising from the last 15 years of investment in our elementary school and middle school infrastructure. And the pink-colored bars are the expected debt levels that'll be incurred when the voters approve the exclusion of debt for the new high school project of the June 12 referendum. In the left-hand chart, total non-exempt debt gradually declines over the five-year period. In the right-hand chart, the exempt debt is increasing through 2022, and then it begins a steady decline. The high school debt is likely to have a term close to 30 years. Next slide, please. State law assigns a statutory debt limit that's an amount of debt which the maximum of the town or municipality may not exceed, a calculation that's based on its taxing capability. The pie chart on the left indicates that Arlington today is only using about 40% of its debt capacity in 2020, including exempt debt. The right-hand chart indicates that the forecast peak in fiscal 2022, the debt load rises to about 61% of the total capacity, leaving an unused segment of 39%. So I'd suggest to you that this comparison indicates that even with the large high school exempt debt and the planned $47.4 million in non-exempt debt, under the guidance of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager, the Treasurer, and the Finance Committee, the town is maintaining prudent levels of total debt. Next slide, please. I'd now like to address the three major projects in the non-exempt capital plan: the Grove Street Project, the central school renovation, and plans for Arlington's public libraries in the 21st century. Next slide, please. The principal buildings in the DPW Grove Street Town Yard were built by the Arlington Gaslight Company in 1914. These buildings are now 105 years old. There have been no major improvements -- and by the way, those buildings were built before my father was born, so it's a long time ago. There have been no major improvements in the buildings in the last 44 years. They are registered in the National Historic Register, and I'd like to share with you some of the details of the conditions of these buildings. Next slide, please. First of all, they are deteriorating in general. They don't meet acceptable industry safety standards in our times. There are rooms where perhaps things like painting are done that are dangerous. There are repair areas that have poor lighting. There are just difficult working conditions throughout the building. Due to the proximity of Millbrook, there's frequent flooding in the work and office areas. And there's insufficient storage for Arlington's valuable rolling stock fleet. And in general, the buildings contribute to operational inefficiency, safety shortfalls for employees, and generally result in poor working conditions. This is a situation that must change. Next slide, please. The photo on the left shows a storage area for flammable and toxic fluids, as you can see, far from a safe and well-managed situation. The photos on the right show leaking roofs in both upper floors and garage storage areas. Next slide, please. From these photos, you can see that many places in the outside of the physical structure, there's deterioration. And if the building envelope fails, the buildings will fail. Next slide, please. Under the direction of DPW Director Mike Rodamacher, the town's retained the services of Weston and Sampson, a noted architectural and engineering firm, and has developed plans for the rehabilitation and renovation of the entire campus. The new facilities will meet safety and code regulations. Critical operations will be located to high ground to avoid the impact of the not infrequent flooding of Millbrook during heavy storms. The IT and Facilities Departments will be accommodated in the new building as part of the town's plan to move noneducational activities out of the Arlington High School infrastructure. And then finally, the plan will maximize the reuse of historical structures for low-impact purposes such as vehicle and equipment storage. Next slide, please. As for the financing, the town meeting has already approved $2.3 million in two actions to create plans for this renovation, and this planning work has been underway. Since DPW provides services for both general activities and water and sewer activities, which are operated under an enterprise fund, the cost of the project is being proportionally split between the capital budget and the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. As you can see from this chart, 72% of the $32 million project cost is being covered by the capital budget and 28% by the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. If you approve this project, the bidding will be underway in 2019, in coordination with the high school project construction will begin in the spring of 2020. Next slide, please. Another old building in the town is the Central School of 27 Maple Street, where many of us park sometimes at town meeting. And the Central School is -- was constructed in 1894. That's 125 years ago. The building served a number of purposes extending across three centuries. It was last used as a school in the late 1970s. In fact, my daughter was in the last sixth-grade class to use this building. Since then, it's become popular as a senior center and also served as an office building for several market-rate tenants who have moved out in recent years. During the last two years, the Arlington Center for the Arts, after an aggressive fundraising program, renovated the upper floors at its own expense prior to moving in in 2018. This project is really three projects in one. The town's looking to make a number of programmatic changes to provide in On the table at the right side, you can see the various requests that were in the prior capital plan, amounting to about three million dollars. Next slide, please. So, after the most recent architectural study and the inclusion of the soft costs and reserves and bringing in the items that were in the capital budget, the expected cost is expected, the cost is expected to be slightly over eight million dollars. This renovation will allow for the building to offer extended service to the town for another thirty years or more. Next slide, please. Some comments on Arlington's libraries. These are not the libraries that your mother or your grandmother knew and loved. In our century of digitally-oriented communications and media, the demands on changing services in the library system have been great. Library Director Andrea Nicolay and the Library Board of Trustees have been developing concepts and visions as to how to address these needs as we go forward. Another factor is the growth in the Arlington school-age population, which has driven the expansion of our elementary and high school system. This also brings the town a greater number of pre-teens and teens anxious to use the library system. The library, in addition, are changing adult work habits, for example, self-employed knowledge workers and the corporations who stress flexible working, working at home, put pressure on the library common areas. So, the Library Board of Trustees, excuse me, and the Friends of the Library have come forward with proposals to expand and modernize both the Robins and Fox libraries for the twenty-first century. Using library trust funds, the, could I, thank you. Using library trust funds, the library has begun studies on how to enhance the Robins Library. Initial estimates indicate this program might cost over eleven million dollars. The Capital Planning Committee is recommending that the planning be funded towards the end of this five, the planning be funded towards the end of this five-year plan. Please keep in mind that these amounts might rise due to inflationary effects. Next slide, please. The Library Board is also looking to support the creation of a new Fox Library in East Arlington. This is a more complicated subject because this facility sits on Mass Avenue, and there has been, in the town master plan, a lot of discussion and plans about how to develop the Mass Avenue corridor. So, we think this project requires significantly more preliminary management analysis to determine the optimal configuration on, on Mass Avenue as we move forward, and we look for the support of the town in doing that. Next slide, please. So, we're recommending in this five-year plan, one point seven million in total for the study or planning for these two expansion steps. After the additional work and development of these concepts, the ultimate investments could require a funding of twenty million dollars or more, which is not yet included in the capital plan. So, we're looking forward to cooperation and support from the Library Trustees, the Select Board, library management, the town manager, and the Planning Department as this is developed. Finally, I would just like to say that we've just talked about forty million dollars, which represents about forty-five percent of the eighty-nine million dollar five-year plan. We continue working with the town manager and the Finance Committee to keep the total non-exempt capital expenditures within the five percent of the, of the total non-exempt budget. And the tables on five and six in the capital report, partially shown in this slide, indicate that even with the large expenditures that are in the plan, the town manager's capital budget and proposed plan stays within those five percent guidelines. So, we thank you for your time, and we ask for your support with town manager's capital plan and vote a favorable action under Article fifty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Veraglu?
Mr. Veraglu, Precinct Ten. I put an amendment in yesterday. It wasn't able to be mailed out to, along the town meeting members list in that time, but I have shared it with the moderator, and he's recognized it at this time. You can't read it, of course. So, let me get to, yeah, I can't read that.
No, that's okay.
So, in the, in the budgets, there's a line item that many of you may have seen, I've seen on the Arlington list, for seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to put a traffic signal at the intersection of Lake Street and the bike path. I think many of us are familiar with the traffic at that area, and we have, there have been several meetings in town to discuss that signal. My proposal, as somebody who regularly uses that bike path through the Lake Street area, is that these monies at this time be redirected to improving the drainage of the bike path prior to Lake Street if heading towards Alwithe. In that area, there's severe flooding, withstanding water for several days. What you can see here is that there's a drain. And which way were you? How do I, yeah?
Can you just go to the other slide?
So, as you can see here, this is Valentine's Day this year, and that ice, that flooding is, I don't know how many, twenty, thirty yards long, and goes edge to edge on the bike path. It's actually frozen over at this time, which is not uncommon. I think there's at least three times that it froze this year. And you can see that the people are pushed to the right. It's actually pretty nice this time because it's snow. Another time, it was just mud. And when it isn't edge to edge, everybody is constrained to the far edge of the bike path, and that includes pedestrians, cyclists, everybody there. I've seen people wipe out on the ice. I've seen people bike through inches of water or try and walk through the edge of the water. I realize that this is somewhat of a rapid shift, but I think if you think about the need for a light, there's a lot of traffic on the bike path, which is why people want a light. So, there's a lot of users of the bike path who are actually putting up with this. We do winter counts for the bike path. There's approximately two-hundred-and-fifty people in the winter traveling down the bike path around Lake Street, six-hundred at Alwithe. And this is in a two-hour period in the mornings and in the evenings. So, what I would ask for your support is to redirect the funds to study this, as Dr., Mr. Rodamacher had suggested, and then make improvements if possible before the coming winter. And I did actually ask Mr. Rodamacher, and he, I'm sure will speak on this, or if he wants to, he should, and there was no concrete number at this time. So, my other proposal is if this comes in at, say, fifty thousand dollars, use the additional seven-hundred thousand towards the light and other improvements at the intersection. If unbelievably it would come for seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, I guess we should look for money for an intersection light at another time. But that's my request. Thank you.
Do we have a second for Mr.? Do we have a second for Mr. Veraglu?
Seconded, thank you.
Mrs. Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patricia Warden, Precinct Eight. First, I would like to thank the Capital Planning Committee for their excellent suggestions for renovation of various historic buildings. It's good news that the Department of Public Works will renovate its historic buildings. However, this project should not go forward until the problem of the Mill Brook at the Department of Public Works, leading to the undersized underground culvert at Arlington High School, is dealt with. The DPW and the high school culvert situation is causing a choke point for the efficient flow of Mill Brook from DPW to Mystic Lake, with the result that, in a bad storm, the DPW yard or button in the high school floods badly and could damage DPW vehicles. The very ill-chosen solution to pave over a high school practice soccer field to park the trucks and vehicles will simply mean that, that the DPW parking lot will become a holding pond, a holding pond for floodwater. That is not a solution. It is just papering over, or should I say paving over, the problem and will perpetuate flooding problems. The obvious solution is to enlarge the culvert. Prior to that, however, the efficient flow of Mill Brook would have to be ensured from DPW to the Mystic Lake. That should be an appropriate and relatively easy matter for the town, since Arlington owns most of the properties through which the Brook flows on its way to the lake. The most significant section, which is in private ownership, the Mill Brook, Mill Street elderly apartments, that is well taken care of and has an excellent large culvert at the end of its property, leading to the section under Buzzell Field. If the Arlington High School culvert is not enlarged, the backup and overflow could damage the newly-designed Wellington Park and its bordering vegetated wetland. Wellington Park includes some very slight flood mitigation measures. However, attempts to improve the Brook at that park and all sections of the Brook northwest of the DPW are going to suffer from the increased flooding that we have found with climate change unless this choke point at the DPW high school is dealt with. The work should already have been done prior to the high school project selection and prior to the DPW renovation plans. There will be plenty of heavy equipment in the high school, and renovation of the culvert should be part of the plan. The current DPW plan is unacceptable. It will cause a very unhealthy heat island effect and also stormwater drainage problems due to the planned new two-lane roadway and DPW athletic field pavement. These problems will be greatly exacerbated by the enlarged school footprint, all the extra town parking on the athletic fields, and even planned use of environmentally damaging and controversial astroturf. We have waited forty years to start to remediate the Mill Brook at Wellington Park. That has been funded by hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants for flood dangers from Federal Emergency Management, Mystic River Watershed Association, Community Preservation Act, and so on. Some money should be dedicated to the DPW culvert remediation. We should not endanger the Wellington project and have to wait another forty years for further Brook improvements for the rest of the Brook. This DPW project should not proceed until the culvert at DPW High School has been remediated. The project is the antithesis of a sustainable Arlington. It is the epitome of irresponsibility of town management, as shown, for example, by the attempted intention to take by eminent domain or other means, the Little Historic House at Grove Street without even telling the family or the Arlington Historical Commission of the historic nature and family use of that house. Let's begin to show some care for Arlington's residents and their environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Warden. We have a motion to adjourn. We also have five minutes. All in favor of adjournment, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? Well, motion passes. Any notices of reconsideration? Mr. Tossi served reconsideration on sixty-three and fifty-seven. We'll see you Wednesday night.